So, we are back again. With my mic closed, I can't talk. We are back again. Hello. Today is something like a strange day. We are starting every of those streamings late. But no problem. The important thing is that we know that. We have already 12 more contributors to the Liquid Galaxy project and also I'm pretty sure that there will be other persons attending the presentation by the YouTube, live streaming or later in YouTube. So first, of course, let me say hello to mentor Victor Carrera. Hi mentor Victor.
Hello everyone. Glad to be here.
I would say Victor, or you have just arrived running, or it's pretty hot outside?
No, I get right running.
You are something like Brett. You need some water, man. Victor Alfredo, you are riding my bike!
Yeah, but here in Netherlands it's not so hot, so I don't sweat.
Yeah, but you also are with the...
Jacket.
With the jacket. So again, we have plenty of contributors of the Liquid Galaxy here because today's presentation is about that there has been some changes that affects some of the contributors doing projects with artificial intelligence with the Gemini API. So, you're gonna present, this is gonna be short I think, what have been the changes and how to deal with the changes to date. So if you want, I don't know who of you is gonna be the first?
I'm gonna start myself. I changed the mic. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, we hear you nice. So you can share your screen Alfredo if you want?
Yes, sure. Let me go directly to this one. Perfect. So, maybe someone you has heard about this Firebase AI logic that they presented in the latest Google I/O in 2025. So this new AI logic in Firebase changed how we integrate Gemini in our Flutter apps. I wrote a medium post, so I can share with you later. But basically, or previously, we have two packages to integrate Gemini in our Flutter apps. We have Google Generative AI and Firebase Vertex AI. With Google Generative AI, we can use Google AI Studio to get an API key and use directly in our code like this. So we have our API key from the Firebase, from the AI Studio, sorry. You inject the key in the generative model and you can start using this AI. It had a good benefit that you have a free tier, so you can use this AI model for free and also you can use the latest model directly from AI Studio. But, on another hand, we have the cons of using API keys in our code that this is not very secure and even more in the front end apps. So, we have another option, call it Firebase Vertex AI, that use directly Vertex AI, that is the Google Cloud product for Gemini, that is more enterprise focused or is more secure. Because you don't need an API key, you only have to configure the Google Cloud project and you can, and you have to connect with your Flutter app without an API key. But with this approach, we cannot use the free tier. Every time that you want to use the Google AI or Gemini, you have to pay for the users. So for prototyping or for a student, it was a very, very big challenge to use directly Vertex AI.
Very important. Please, sorry for interrupt you. Very important point. So you have to go for which one to be on the free tier?
For the Google AI Studio.
In the Google AI Studio? So...
But now it's different.
Now it's different? No, no, I mean now.
And now, we're going to go with the latest announcement in the Google I/O, Firebase AI Logic. Firebase AI Logic, that I will show you later directly in a Firebase project, is the new Firebase product under Firebase, that you can use directly Gemini using this new, I would say, tool inside the Firebase project or the Firebase ecosystem. With this new product, you can use this new SDK, call it Firebase AI, that you can search directly in pub.dev. And with this package, you can use the Google AI free tier and also you can use the Vertex AI in the same SDK. So you don't have to change the SDK to use the free tier or to change to a production mode and use Vertex AI. With Google AI, you have, or you still have the free tier, so you can start prototyping with this model using the Google AI and later you can change to Vertex AI and you can use the same models, you can use the same methods in your SDK. And the best thing about this is you don't have to manage API keys. Because you have to integrate the Firebase project in your, in this case Flutter app, in Android iOS work or desktop and you can use directly this Google AI free tier without an API key. Firebase is going to set up everything for you, so you don't have to worry about the API key management and also you don't have to worry about to go to Google AI Studio to generate a new API key if you want to use in another project or if your API key expired or if you export your API key. You can use directly this Firebase AI SDK with the Firebase project and you have the free tier and also a security to connect Gemini API without SDK. And even more, in the future, if you want to go in a production mode with your app, you can change to use Vertex AI, you have the local project, you can set up limit, it's more robust and you can have better billing. And you don't have to change anything in your code, you only have to change the model initialization. So it's very easy to use and it's a game changer. Because with one SDK in your Flutter app, you can use the free tier with Google AI and the premium or the paid tier with Vertex AI inside the Firebase. So it's very, very good. It's like, it's a game changer because all the problems that I face in the, you know, the workshop or explaining this to all the Flutter developers is okay, but if I have to use the free tier, I have to use the API key, so I have to store the API key and this is not very secure, so I have to create a server to connect with the API key to get different API keys. But if I want to go to a production mode, I have to change the SDK to use Vertex AI. And now, with this Firebase AI SDK, you don't have to do anything about this. You only have to go to Firebase and select which one do you want to use. Maybe I can share directly the Firebase project. Let me present it very, very quickly and I can show you how to see in the Firebase. And later, our mentor Victor will show you how to connect your Flutter app with Firebase, right? So, this is a normal Firebase project. Here, in the execution, it was AI, sorry. You have this new AI logic. Okay? So here, you can see which API are you enabled. So per app, in this case I have the, some Android, iOS and Web app. This is a project that I'm working on indeed. And here, in the configuration, it's in Spanish, but it's configuration, you can see if your API for Gemini is enabled and if your API for Vertex AI is enabled. For Vertex AI, you have some AI monitoring that is a paid service and also you can see what is the, some tools that is related with your Vertex AI. And for Gemini AI free tier or for Google AI Studio, you only have to enable this Gemini API and that's it. You don't have to do anything more. So it's very, very nice. If you have to integrate Gemini in your Flutter app, it's very easy. The SDK is very similar to the previous Google Generative AI and the Firebase Vertex AI. So now with this Firebase AI, that is tricky the naming, you can use directly. So, I don't know if you prefer now the question or maybe we can...
Let's do the questions at the end, but I have a question for you that I wanted to listen to after.
Yeah.
You didn't say anything about Firebase Studio?
No, you don't have to use it.
You don't have to? Of course, you go directly to Firebase.
Yeah, you can use Firebase Studio using this Firebase AI logic, but with your Flutter app, you don't have to use it. If you want to use it, you can use it.
Yeah. For me, it's a little bit curious. Of course, I know what you can do, you can use it directly with Firebase, but a question is, later, I hope the contributors do that question, but in the middle?
Yeah.
So... You can access this AI logic from, in the Firebase without launching any other API from Firebase? I mean, just using this? So I mean, there is no need to launch any, if you don't need it, of course. I'm thinking about our project, you know, theoretically, we don't, we will not allow to use other, imagine like authentication or whatever, because we try not to use that kind of, that kind of, because we don't need them. But, so you can go to Firebase, put this and use this in your project directly, you don't need to have any other API?
No. For example, in this project, the only enabled tool or feature in the Firebase is this Firebase AI logic. So I don't have any authentication, database, analytics, distribution, hosting. So, it's, I mean, you have to access and you have to have a Firebase project, but with the Gemini API that is free, you don't have to pay anything and even you don't have to change your billing. So you can use for free.
That was my next question. You need to have a billing account?
No.
That was why I thought in Firebase Studio, because you don't need for three projects, I remember, you don't need a billing account. So also you don't need a billing account to use this AI with Firebase?
No.
But you have to be logged with your own Google account?
Yeah.
But you don't need, you don't need a billing account, I mean, you don't need to have your Visa card inside the Firebase?
No, no. For the Gemini API, that is this one, it's in Spanish, but this is this one, the first one, you can enable without putting any payment method.
Okay.
In this case, in Firebase is Spark Plan.
Okay, good. Victor? You can share your thing.
Are you going to show us how to connect Flutter apps with Firebase?
First of all, I would like to share...
Stop sharing your screen. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me know when you can see my screen.
It's okay.
I thought, I think completely...
Have you tried to close your computer, turning off and turning on?
Okay. First now...
It works?
Yeah.
It works?
Yeah, it works. IT works. IT crow.
Exactly. 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 In my opinion, when I was, when the team decided to prepare this, this presentation to speak, to teach better Firebase AI, I just started to read the official documentation and I thought to catch some pictures or some text from the web portal, but finally, we thought the best way to do this is why not read the manual, let's say. So that means RTFM meaning. And I thought, and I completely think this is the best way. So, as Alfred said before, we have a brief introduction explaining the motivation behind of this improvement of changes. And if we want to, or if we want to start, well, depending on the technology, in our case, probably most of us here, we want to create a Flutter app. We have to use this development environment using at least Dart 3.2. Then, also, they propose an example app that we can use. And these steps, if in Firebase Console, is exactly what Alfredo just explained to us. Great. Saying like to go to Firebase Console, go to the Firebase AI Logic and start with, select the kind of Gemini API we want to use, Gemini Developer API or Vertex. Don't forget the billing capability depending on our decisions. Also, if we want to use Firebase AI SDK, we need to add those dependencies with Firebase AI and also Firebase Core, because this is required for any Firebase dependency that we want to use. Then, in the left, in the main app, we need to include both and also we need to initialize Firebase in the main Dart. As we, as we know, because probably we have used Crashly Diggs or we have used any other Firebase capability. But if you don't, we can create a project or we can read it simpler, because we can see in the step 3, for example, with Gemini, after this initialize app that we need to use inside of our main app probably, we need to initialize the model. This is an example, because they are putting all the code, but if you have a look about this, you cannot, you will not see any main method. And that is because the Firebase team wants to give you the the capability to do the best decision regarding what is the best place. The initialize app, don't forget, they proposed to us to put them inside of the leave main, in the main app, inside of the, probably before to run up. So that means if we create an example, a project, hold on. We will be able to create a project and to see the simplest steps to follow this. But the best way, for example, if we want to use Gemini, we have to is select the model of the generative model that we want to use and if we use the Vertex, the, we have Firebase AI, dot Vertex AI instead of Google AI. And again, we have to select the generative model in any case. And in this case, we can see, for example, how to send a prompt request to a model. All of them are together, you can see in a gray way the previous code that we showed in previous steps and the new lines that we will need to complete the step that we are doing. And don't forget, we will need to include our API. Where was the place when they told us? Here. When using Firebase Logic Client SDK with Gemini Developer API, you do not add your Gemini API key into your app's codebase. Also, if you are contributing in Liquid Galaxy project, you have to keep this mo in mind, if it is possible, because your repository will be public. So, you will have to keep in mind, don't put your, any API keys, not only Gemini, all of them, Google Maps or any other, inside of your codebase, because GitHub will will scan our codebases looking for API keys, leaks and an email will be sent to me, Liquid Galaxy project. And a cat will cry if you do that, so don't do that.
Okay, also, all the hackers in the world will be scanning the GitHub for your API keys. So, don't do that. So guys, so excuse me for interrupting you. Maybe I am a bit out of place, you know, it's been some hard days in my life in the last days. But, again, if you go to one of those selections, you say that Firebase will be the one handling the API key, so how this works with a Liquid Galaxy application that we need the user to put their own API key when they use their application? Not the developer, but the final user?
Yeah, that means the app, we, I mean, it's not the same, the final build than the codebase. In the codebase, it's not a good practice to have it, because as we all of, all of all we know, it is a leak because somebody can touch it. If we, the point is, when you build the app, of course, the API will be inside of the app. But when Android is generating an APK in release mode, it uses R8 and is ring minimized, so it means the codebase will be obfuscated, so it is not simple without the, because there is an official file for obfuscation that can be used for desobfuscation, but the point is, sometimes this file is never, is never generated, so nobody can desobfuscate our codebase. I mean, nobody means like Google is putting really hard effort, harder in this, with this tool, the final APK apps or AAV apps. So, that means we are safe. So no worries if we have the API key inside of the build, because our apps will use it, they need them. But the point is, in our source code, we have to use it in a file, for example, .env or keystore, keystore dot properties. So that means they are secure, because those files has to be ignored from the repository, so they will never be uploaded accidentally or not.
Yeah Victor, but the question maybe is that really, you have to build the application, but without the API key, because it's the, it's the final user of the application that has to, has to put their own API key on the, on the settings of the application. You get my point?
Okay.
You don't have to. But I'm thinking about how the guys that are listening to us today, the contributors and other people in YouTube, of course, for the Liquid Galaxy is one thing and for other applications, maybe other, but for us, the developer has to use their own key to develop in the development process. But when this person makes the release, the build application that we will test on Liquid Galaxy and finally publish in our web store, in our own web store, there will be no API key. There will be a setting for you to enter the API key. So, this is my thing. How this all mixes? In which one of these two different options you select from Firebase and also, any other question you want to say to the contributor?
Okay, some, something, I mean, probably along the, the developers, among developers are developing, probably this is something tired that they have to manually insert them. So, probably there is a best way to do this. For example, if you are in the book, you can read them, you can read the API inside of inside of a .env file, skipper. So you can have your own API key in a specific file, skipper or ignored in the repository. And in the book mode, the API key will be read in that file. If that file is not exist or is not in the book, you can put the other way, adding manually in the text box.
Alfredo, what is your point in this?
Yeah, I think, I don't know if I'm sure, but you mentioned that, for example, we build the app and we publish and another user want to use this AI capability, so I go to the AI Studio, get the API key, inject in the app and I can use this AI stuff. But with this approach of Firebase, you cannot do this.
That's the main point. That's the point why I want to discuss since five minutes ago, five minutes ago. So also, you didn't say exactly, if I am wrong. So, contributors have to develop the code using their own API key, testing, whatever. But when they release the app, there will be no API key. The final user that maybe any Liquid Galaxy in the world has to go to his own place, get their own API key, maybe pay the API and insert it in our settings or settings page. So, now in this, how these guys have to solve this? Which one they have to choose? This is the point of today's presentation.
Yeah, that's tricky, because now with this Firebase, I mean, the Google, the Google Gemini API is still available, so if you develop your own SDK and you go directly with the, with the API, you can inject still using this API key. But if you want to use this new Firebase AI SDK, you cannot manage your own keys. Firebase will manage the key for you. That means, you as a developer, you create a Firebase project, you connect with your app and that's it. You don't have to manage anything. When you are building your app and deploy to the user, the user will use your Firebase project. You can still use in the free tier, so you, you have the limitations that you give to the user and they can use it, but when the rate limit is over, they will stop working or it will stop working. But you cannot inject using this Firebase AI SDK. You can still use in this API, that is going directly with HTTP methods and go directly with the Gemini API using Google AI Studio. But if you want to use the SDK, the official SDK from Google, you have to, you have to set up a Firebase project and you cannot share. That's the, that's the point.
So, all need is clear. Google has done whatever he has done, but you say, Alfredo, that still you can, you can reach the Gemini API directly, but as far as I know, this is the meeting about, they deprecated the usual package, so...
Yeah, they deprecated, they are trying to in Flutter at least, or in Dart, to not put API key. And that's mean, you cannot use directly the API. You have to use Firebase. Firebase is going to organize your API key.
Let's hope any contributor makes your question about, because I am the one doing that, because I can interrupt you, but that's the question. How, we know what we need for the Liquid Galaxy, what's our goal, our way of doing? Google has done some stuff, of course, they have to improve, they have to, whatever. They have their own business decisions, but we have our needs. So guys, Victor, Alfredo, my, the point of today's presentation is for the guys that are doing Gemini based application this year, how they have to handle this thing during development and in releasing?
Yeah.
That's the question again. What's the solution?
I can give you two options. The first one is you can still use in the deprecated package, that is Google Generative AI.
Oh, it's not deprecated, you say?
It's deprecated, but you can still use it. So, let me share, I'm going to share very quickly.
But this means that at some point in the future, it will not work or it might happen?
Yeah, if they, if they change the, you know, the API, yes. So this is not the best option. So can you see my screen?
Yeah.
So if you go still to Google AI Studio, you can still use in the API key. And you can still use in like HTTP request, this HTTP request, you can convert to Dart code and that's it. And you can still use in these APIs that you can see in your AI Studio. So it's the best option. If you, if you want to still use in these API keys and this API access mode, you can use directly the API key. Another option is, if you go to pub.dev and you search for Google Generative AI, they say that in the remit, deprecated. But with the last version, you can still use it. When they change the API key, nah, the API key, sorry, not the API key. When they changed the API key, nah, the API key, sorry, not the API key, the API methods and the API structure, maybe.
Or flatter version, probably in the future, flatter version.
This may happen in, in, in September, for example. This may happen just after we develop. So at this point, then the pro, the projects, the, the final releases from the contributors will, will start, will stop to work. So.
Yeah.
My developed flatter mentors, what's the solution? We say to the contributor, they have to use. It's up to you, you are the, the flatter guys.
I, I would say that if they have.
You have to be the ones that have to give the answer to the contributors, understand me?
Here's the mic, there's a mic.
Yeah, so I will say that if you want to search about Lanchain, that is a framework to build AI apps, is an agnostic SDK for every provider. You can use OpenAI, you can use Anthropic, or you can use Google. So they have their own package, called Lanchain Google, where you can use this Google Generative AI that they use the API of Gemini. You don't have to call the API directly, you can use an SDK and you can still use in your API key.
So Javer Hand say something, could you please Javer Hand open your, your camera? Please, Javer, it was Javer that. So you Javer that are gonna use Lanchain? You say?
Uh, no, not for the GSO project, but apart from that, like I wasn't interested in this thing, so that's why.
So there was, I don't remember, Javer, thank you. There was some students that already asked, says this to us. Why we don't use instead the Lanchain? Because in some places it's something like, like the way to do it. So you mean that instead of using the, the pub, the package, it is already deprecated and maybe make and stop the, the working? If they, if they use the Lanchain, Lanchain package, at least this is not gonna be deprecated soon?
No, because this is, it is an open source project. I know the, the guy who is maintaining this, this project. But they, in this case, for the Lanchain Google, that is a provider, they are still using this Google for, uh, uh, Google AI for developers. I don't know why they don't have the same naming in every, in every place. But they, they are using the API keys and the API directly. So if you go to the example, probably, uh, here in some place you can, you, you have to inject the API key or the Vertex AI project. So I think this is another option if you want to use it. And also there are some, um, not official AI package, call it, for example, I saw yesterday, one package.
Let's gonna stay with more official things like Lanchain. Don't, don't be, don't, don't try packages with four stars only.
Yeah, so there are few ones, call it, for example, this flattered Gemini. But this, I think it's an open source code and it's the same, they are still using this API key.
Just in case, don't use this one. Okay, so.
It's, it's, it's a wrapper i- i- inside the API, so.
It goes to, it goes to the same place. So, so, so I hope contributors made a question, but the question is that one. So what do they have to use? What, what is our, and I prefer to give just them one solution, not options. So what do you think? Go to the one? We, we cannot go to the Firebase one. Firebase does not work for our needs because we need to release without an API key. Without, because the user in Liquid Galaxy, wherever place in the world, they have to use their own API key because they are the ones that maybe have imagined thousands of people coming there, launching thousands of requests. At some point, this is, will start to reach your premium, premium package and suddenly they start to say, give me your Visa card, I want to get your money. So we have to leave this option to the, to the project. So what is the solution? Go to Lanchain or?
I, I think the Lanchain is the most stable one. I don't know if Victor has.
Victor, what's your opinion? Are you there still, Perfecto?
Yes, um, I was, um, no, I mean, I didn't, I didn't see any other option. But, um, I want to show you, um, these, uh, these frequents, uh, answers and questions. And regarding this topic, they, they say exactly, um, because, well, they said this, what we were talking. And they say exactly when using the Firebase, do not add because Firebase AI Logic SDK is, is a proxy service. So you will not need a Gemini API key. Instead, our Firebase AI Logic Proxy Service will internally include the Gemini API key in each request to the Gemini Developer API.
That's perfect, but this is not the obvious case. And I, and also I don't, I don't get the point because I will say that lots of developers do their apps and they want the final consumer to use their own API key, not their, the one provided by, by himself. No, I mean, this is a very typical escape.
But look, the second point. How can I change the Gemini API key user to call the Gemini Developer API?
Okay.
When using the Firebase AI Logic SDK, it's unlikely that you will need to change your Gemini API key. However, here are two cases where you might need to. If you accidentally leave the key, I'm going to replace it with a new secure key. If you accidentally deleted the key, note that, that you can delete the key within 30 days. Here's how to change the, uh, before to continue, there is another big case. If you create an app that is not the final app and you don't want to include the Gemini API key because somebody else, a third person will include it. And for me, this is more important than, um, any other. Here's how to, how you change the Gemini API key in that use it by Firebase AI Logic as the case. If your Firebase with K still exists, deleted, you can delete API service credential in that same page. But I think this is, this webpage, I think, is, yes, is the Google Cloud. Um, this is the Google Cloud, so.
Still in the same problem? Because it's, it's again in your, in your project, so you can.
Yes, it's inside of the, in your project of Google Cloud Console, so.
Okay, 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 we have seven minutes because we have another meeting. Alfredo, you were the one appointing this for the 7:00 PM Central European Summer Time. So let's, let's gonna open, let's start, start to, stop sharing the screen, please. Let's gonna open the mic for the colleagues and we have five minutes to answer your questions. Contributors, please open your cameras. I will say thank you if you open your cameras. And for you all that you have, um, Gemini or artificial intelligence based project, it's your moment because as you can see, we haven't three that we know a bit how this works. We are not 100% agreeing on what to do. So I imagine that you are the ones that have to have real needs on what, what to use. So please, for example, um, Javier, Anishka is not there, I think. Alejandro, Debanjan, um, Lucia at some point. Uh, who of you have to use Gemini PKs? Oh, Lucia, you're at home now. Welcome back. You're not on the street, that's, that's strange. We always catch you on the street. So guys, the ones that are doing artificial intelligence Gemini based projects. I have my own selection here, but I can see at this moment exactly which of you are gonna use this. For example, Javier, you're not gonna use specifically Gemini, you're gonna use other, other LLMs?
I've been, I've been using Lama two or Lama three for, from Meta to do this, to do my, my project, but we.
So the LLM that you are gonna, gonna put in your Docker is a, is a Lama?
Well, I, I don't, I don't really know because yesterday I was, I was talking with Moises, my mentor.
Yeah.
That we were using Gemini for this project to improve the, the performance. But I don't know, I, I will have a check now to, to move from the, from the Gemini idea to back to the Lama one. And maybe I have to find you on the model to improve the, the curacies and so on, but.
I would say also, and Moises is a very, very clever Google developer expert. If you have to go to Lama, don't go to Lama, just go to Gemma. Gemma is the Google, that's of course, is, is the open source one. Specifically, they have, they have models, I think it's Gemma N, released only a couple of weeks ago, that is specifically for robotic things. So it's specifically training for this. So instead of us, we are in a Google project, man. If you can use Google technology, it will be better. So and also you have plenty, you have plenty, you can, you can download the model. They have many different sizes and, and also you can use an external API to reach a Gemma API externally. So any of you are gonna use AI? I don't remember. Mohit, your project is not using AI with the Martian climate because you're gonna just get the information from an API, is that right? Mohit?
No, sir, I'll be using AI to summarize the visualization.
Ah, okay, so what API are you, what are you use?
I have thought of using Gemma, but I'm still looking for a better alternative.
But you are just, excuse me, I don't remember your project at this moment exactly how you're gonna use the AI. But you are just gonna send some information and wait for a, for a resume, um, and.
Yes, I'll be sending the context of the visualization and.
You have to go, but this is only a small portion of your project, if I don't remember well. I mean, it's something like the user will have an option to select this, is, is right? I mean, your, your bread is not, is not based on this data. It's something like, like one of the many options your project has.
Uh, it is a small feature of the app, yeah.
That's, that's what I wanted to say. So, so my point is that you have to go Gemini, Mohit. And then you have to know what today we are talking about. You have to get a clear point from today. Mohit, your mentor is Victor Carreras that is there. So you have to get a, a clear point of what, what is the technologies you're gonna use. So Victor Carreras, your mentor in Mohit, so let's go Lanchain or what?
Are, are you asking me?
Victor Carreras, you are the only one, Victor, today.
Yes, um, yeah, I, I mean, um, glad to, uh, glad to say hello, Mohit. And for sure, um, we, um, we started a couple of weeks with a meeting, with a presentation meeting about his project. So, yes, um, the, I really love the project of Mohit because, uh, um, with the, it feels like a really astronomical project.
Because this is a Martian project, a Martian, I mean, of course, this is.
I feel, I feel, I feel like in a.
My question, Victor, was clear. We, you have to make Mohit use their, their AI size of the project using Gemini. And the question is, you have to use Lanchain. Alfredo, let's, let's have the final answer to these guys. Bedan, do you have an opinion on this guy? Bedan, mentor Bedan, are you there? Do you have an opinion? You know what we're talking about or not?
Yeah, using Lanchain, uh.
So Deb, Deb is not gonna use any, any, any AI on his.
Yeah. I've used Lanchain separately with Python, not with Flutter, so I don't have enough.
Any, any other?
I, I, I have to say that this Lanchain in Dart is a port of the Python. You don't have to use Python for this Lanchain, it's a port.
I know.
You cannot, you cannot use Python, you have to use the port, that port. You cannot use Python with us since many years ago. So any, any other person? Lucia, at some point you will, you will implement, not a part of your code, but you, you, you will implement the answer, the answer. So I mean, the, that if you use AI, go to use Gemini, use.
Yeah, maybe at some point I will use AI to like summarize really big projects that I have to get information also. But apart from that.
Well, we will talk about, uh, who, any other person of you that is gonna use, um, you, Shuma, go.
Yes, so I will be using Gemma only to create the tours of all the forests that I'll.
And how, how you are gonna call Gemma? What is your way to call Gemma?
So I, I like, uh, the, there is a basic package, right? There is a basic pub dev package, so I'll directly call that and provide the API keys in the settings screen for the user to provide his.
There is a specific pub dev package for Gemma?
That is a Grok. Grok has multiple models out of those.
Okay, you're gonna use Grok that we used hardly last year.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Grok is a, is the fastest inferencer, inferencer and it, they have, they have Gemma and all the others, Lamas or whatever, open, open source, even you can use DeepSick, the Chinese one. Okay, good. Any, any other, any other of you are gonna use AI? Guys, I can see all of you on the conference, the other people that is not sharing their lovely faces with us. Hello, any other? No? Okay, so Alfredo, Victor, thank you. But I, I think still is not 100 finish. Yeah, we have to move, but still is not 100 finish. What is the answer? If those guys have to use Gemini in their project, let's arrange that we're going Lanchan, is that right?
I, I will say Lanchan as my opinion as a mentor.
Nobody, that's a matter of opinion, we have to be clear on this because we cannot use Firebase. We cannot use Firebase for this reason. Go, Victor, we have 10 seconds.
I am, I am opening, um, I am opening GitHub issue to Firebase team requesting.
Good.
The API key.
Yeah, the third case, you say. Hey man, there are people that will develop projects using your APK for third parties and they have to introduce their own third party. So very good, very good. And you know, Victor is, is, is heading to be a Google developer expert too. He's trying hard and this is the way collaborating. So thank you everyone for coming today. Thank you mentors, Alfredo, Victor, thank you very much. You are always very helpful. Bedan, mentor Bedan, thank you for staying here. Mentor Prayak, thank you for staying here. See you and remember, GSO takes a lot to start, but when it starts, it goes so fast. So have your work daily, work with your mentor, and if there is any question, contact us. Take care, bye bye.
Well, thank you.